Good evening, welcome to the U of C city council meeting today. It is six o'clock on the nose, we're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. First thing up on the agenda is roll call. Terrell.
Mayor Gill.
Here.
Vice Mayor Dukes.
Here.
Councilmember Buckland.
Here.
Councilmember Mann.
Here.
Councilmember Starkey.
Here. Okay, if you'd please rise for the invocation, followed by the pledge allegiance.
If you'll bow your heads with me, please. Dear wise and loving father, we're grateful for your presence in this public meeting. Thank you for this day and the many blessings that you provide each of us. This evening, we ask for your guidance during this meeting and the decisions that will be made here tonight. Please give us an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in U of City and the surrounding communities. It's in your most blessed name that I pray. Amen.
Councilmember Starkey, could you lead us in the pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first thing on the agenda is presentations and proclamations, and tonight we have two proclamations to give. First one is to Tim McKenna from Linda Soda Bar and Grill, who'll be receiving the proclamation.
Mr. McKenna.
Oh, okay, Mr. McKenna could not make it. Then we'll move on to proclamation number two, to Dr. James Mariner, who's been on the personnel board for the city of U of City. Dr. Mariner, if you can come and join me up in the front.
I've got a proclamation for Dr. James Mariner, and I've got a short version to read, but it's just as well. We would like to take this opportunity to honor.
Good on you.
Take this opportunity to honor Dr. James Mariner, who volunteered 25 years with expertise in services to the city on the personnel board. Dr. James Mariner was appointed to the U of City Personnel Board by the city council on October 2nd, 1989. Dr. Mariner vigorously involved himself in matters of the personnel board, became an important distinguished voice, and since his contribution to the personnel board through independence, awfulness, and conscientiousness. Dr. Mariner served on many hearings and results from the decisions. His leadership, fairness, kindness, and integrity in all personnel board matters. His dedication, professionalism, and commitment to the personnel board during 25 years were invaluable to the city. I therefore give resolve that I can ask you, mayor of the city of U of City, to have this entire city. I commend and thank Dr. James Mariner for his outstanding dedication to the personnel board, his full participation in making decisions. That's the interest of all citizens of U of City, and I consider that to urge all residents of the city of U of City to join me in recognizing Dr. Mariner for his contributions. I just want to personally say thank you very much for everything that you've done for our community, especially serving for more than 25 years. Thank you so much. Just want to say that it's been an honor. Thank you.
Okay. Next up is a public hearings, number three, abandonment and the intended parkland designation of approximately 15.2 acres of city-owned property between Live Oak Boulevard and Clark Avenue. Mr. McIntyre.
Good evening, mayor and members of the council. First of all, you have to excuse some catching a cold, so please excuse the roughness of the voice. I'm here this evening asking council to consider adopting a resolution to abandon 15.2 acres of city-owned property located between Live Oak Boulevard and Clark Avenue that was intended park purposes when purchased back in 1994, and ask council to open a public hearing to receive any and all testimonies offered this evening. The map before you is, by the way, notice the highlighter on the, last time I was here, remember, couldn't hardly see it, but you can see Clark Avenue right here, Live Oak Boulevard. This is the 15.2 total acres. There are three parcels in this 15.2 acres, that's why you see those two designated right there. In 1994, the city purchased 14.5 acres. The acquisition agreement stated at that time that it was the current intention of the city to possibly build a community park. The remaining 1.5 acres was purchased in 1998. Also in 1994 at that time, North Ridge Park was built. North Ridge Park is right there. It is a four and a half acre park with play features, a walking path, and open space for active recreation, and is south of the proposed property. In 2004, the general plan update did not designate the subject property as parkland. In fact, rather, it was designated as low-density residential or R1. In 2005, the city built a detention pond, which is approximately five acres. And jumping ahead eight years, kind of why we're here now, is that in October of 2013, Axel Carl Schoy Properties approached the city about this piece of property because they had identified it as a possible new site for the Twin Rivers Charter School. In February of 2014, in the interest of transparency and at the direction of the council, they asked us to go out for a request for proposals to see if anybody else was interested in the property. Forty-five days later, the only response that we did receive was from Axel Carl Schoy Properties. Last month, city council adopted a resolution declaring the city council's intention to abandon and consider selling portion or all of the property. Last week, the Parks and Recreation Commission considered the abandonment of the property as well, and in their deliberations, they found in favor to abandon the park. The chairperson and one of our commissioners, we have two here this evening, on behalf of the Parks and Rec Commission. Per the government code, section 38501, it provides that if a property is going to be sold or purchased by a city, let me back up, provides that if a property has been purchased by a city for park purposes, that the property may be abandoned and then sold if the city council finds the following: three things. One, the property has not been used by the public for park purposes. Two, that no public funds have been spent expended to improve the property as a park. And three, that all or any portion of the property is not appropriate or necessary for park purposes. Staff and legal council agree that all these conditions apply to this subject property. The area surrounding the property is currently well-served of existing parks. We talked about North Ridge Park, and then over here is to the east is the Feather River Parkway as well. In addition, there are other areas of our city that are underserved, and in the near future, our commissions will be evaluating this and coming before council with a recommendation as well. I'd gladly entertain any questions at this time, and request council to open up the public hearing.
Any questions from council members from Mr. McIntyre at this point in time?
Nope.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and open this up to the public hearing. Anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item can do so by going to the podium and stating your name. I do have a speaker card for Mr. John Whitman.
Thank you, mayor, members of the council. My name is John Whitman. I live at 900 North Ridge Drive in northwest U of City. If you look at the exhibit there, you can see North Ridge Drive across from North Ridge Park to the south of subject property, and I live immediately on the corner overlooking North Ridge Park. I'd just like to clarify something right at the get-go. One, I oppose the abandonment, and one of the reasons was the original intent, and I'll get into that, but there seems to be some confusion about North Ridge Park. North Ridge Park is a neighborhood park, it's not a community park. It has by default become somewhat of a community park because there are no other parks in the area that serve that area. And we have groups of people coming from Yuba County and other parts of U of City and Center County to utilize that park for organized events on weekends, to the point where they commandeer and occupy the play area to the exclusion of the neighborhood period. And there is an unmet need for a community park in the northwest quadrant. As stated by staff, the properties were acquired for the express purpose to be utilized for a community park. That purpose was memorialized in the council resolutions in 1994 and 1998 concurrent with the acquisition of those parcels. As I mentioned, there's a distinct difference between a community park and a neighborhood park. Community park serves the entire community, not the neighborhood. We were happy, most of us in the neighborhood, when the detention pond was put in because that kind of foreclosed development of that property for a community park with access from Clark Avenue, which would have directly impacted the neighborhood. To say that that property has not been identified as useful for a community park as recently as the past three years, the city has commissioned community meetings to gather input on desired improvements in a community park at that location. As I mentioned, there's unmet need in that quadrant. The exhibit that's in your package is a little bit misleading because there's Highway 99 that bisects the city, and that together with a levy really isolates that quadrant. As stated in staff's report, government code section 38501 requires several findings on your part before you can abandon the property. The last condition is, and I quote, "and that all or any portion of the property is not appropriate, convenient, or necessary for park purposes," unquote. This finding cannot and should not be met. I request your denial of this request. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Whitman. Anybody else from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Couldn't do so? Okay? Any questions, comments from the council members? Mr. McIntyre, do you want to thank you for not only, as last time we talked about this item, but opening it back up to the bids, but especially taking it to our Parks and Recreation Commission? That's what the commission is supposed to do, works with the public, and have the open meetings and come back with their recommendations to council as far as what they recommend. And I believe that's what the recommendation of the council is, or the recommendation of the commission is, correct?
Correct.
What's the pleasure of the council?
To the mayor.
Yes.
Just with one comment, I would agree with Mr. Whitman. At one point, the designation of that property would have probably been better or best served as a community park. With the establishment of 80-plus acres, just a mere few feet away within the levy area, that has changed dramatically with the usage of that increasing on an ongoing basis. That property over there, and with the second phase of development, will be really a monumental park effort within U of City, within that quadrant. And I think that with that, I would make a motion to follow staff's recommendation for the abandonment and the intended sale.
Okay, I've got a motion.
A second.
A second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose?
No. Motion carries. Thank you. Somebody's phone is on? Okay, that usually, when somebody's phones, then that means a drink for all the council members. So, after the meetings, please see us. Public communication, you're welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment is taken on items listed on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on items not listed on the agenda will be heard at this time. Comments on controversial items may be limited and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinion of all groups. Number four is written requests. Members of the public submitting written requests at least 24 hours prior to the meeting will normally be allotted five minutes to speak, and I believe we do have a written request for Mr. Gary Stuckey from Local 1. Just turn the microphone on and state your name and address for the record.
Gary Stuckey, executive director with Public Employees Union Local 1. I address is 718 Bridge Street, U of City. Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, my purpose for appearing this evening is not to negotiate with you, but rather to express what I believe to be the representation position of the membership I represent. Local 1 and your employees desire to have a good, positive, constructive working relationship with the elected leadership and the administration of the city. I appear before you this evening because from our perspective, the position the council has taken, or the city has taken in our negotiations, seems to dismiss and not recall the sacrifices that your employees have made. So I want to take a moment to revisit that. We talk about a three-year furlough. In fact, the furloughs were first put in place in 2009 with a 5% furlough. That was continued for a second year, and then in 2011, the parties met again and agreed upon a further furlough, increasing it to 10% for another three years. So your employees have actually been under furlough for five years. Taking an average salary for the group, which I determined based upon the salary schedule, middle step, of 3,832, that represents a wage loss to each employee on the average of about $18,000. Also during that period of time, there were scheduled two salary increases. As it turned out, it was based upon the California CPI, all state, all urban consumers. The employees would have received a 2% increase in 2009 and 2010. Employees never received those increases. The wage loss from not taking those increases represents another $8,000. So on the average, each employee has donated during this rather difficult financial time approximately $26,000. Now, some employees have not suffered that loss because of overtime. But the fact of the matter is, because of the furloughs, many employees, many of them, I say, those primarily in the water treatment plant and in the south plant, and happening to work overtime to cover that 24/7 operation, have lost time with their family. This is an important factor to having a positive, good relationship with family members. So it's not just the economics. But in addition to that, during this period of time, the CPI has actually been approximately 7% from 2008 to 2013, depending upon month of the year that you pick, it can vary, but on the annualized basis, I figure it to be about 7%. If you take that 2008 salary of $3,832 and apply the furlough, that reduces the salary to approximately $3,449. But if you apply the inflation, that salary is reduced again to $3,190. So the employees have had a diminished wage because of inflation and their purchasing power, and have been impacted by the loss of wages due to furlough and the loss of those salary increases. I think it's also important to note that the survey that the city completed, and has been a part of the discussions that we've had, present a skewed perspective because the salary data that was used for U of City in fact uses that full salary with no reduction. If you apply the furloughs and apply the fact that there's a loss of income, what you really have is, is out of the 24 classifications that you had sufficient data, 14 are more than 10% below the median salary. During the same period of time, the city's year-ending balance and beginning balance increased from $3.8 million to over $8 million. This is not a city on the verge of bankruptcy. Quite honestly, and I think each of you know it, the city is rather well-positioned financially. It is time to give back to your employees, and time to be fair and equitable. I don't believe that the employees are seeking unreasonable increases. The 12% that we have on the table is obviously a starting position, but it represents that combination of the loss of income and inflation. So I respectfully request that you give consideration to these thoughts, and that you give direction to your negotiator to return. I believe that if we work together, we can come up with a reasonable contract, but the position that the city has currently taken is not acceptable to employees, and will lead to us having to go to mediation, perhaps fact-finding, and other actions. I don't think that's a productive use of our time. So I'm hopeful that we can begin a meaningful process of negotiations towards a contract that works for both of us. I've prepared some documents, I'll give them to the city clerk. There's one for each of you, one for the city manager, and one for the HR director. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stuckey. I do, again, thank you for coming here and speaking on behalf of the employees that you represent, and I do want to let all the employees know that we, as a council, we do appreciate each and every one of you, all your hard work that you've continued to do for many years. And this last few years have been a tough and a challenging years for the city, been very uncharted waters for many of us. As we sat here and looked at our budgets, we saw revenues falling, we saw expenditures increasing, and I think you hit the nail on the head, this is definitely something that we're definitely not going to do, is negotiate within the public here, nor is this the place to do it. But earlier in the year, one of the things that we, as a council, gave direction to was to, we needed to take a look at balancing our budget, and that is without continuing to kick the can down the curve, no longer keep borrowing money from our savings account to balance our budget. And that's something that we've given direction to continue to do, coming up with a plan, instead of trying to balance the budget in one year, I try to balance the budget over the next two, three, four years, and taking a look at that. The other thing was to, yes, balancing the budget without the furloughs, taking the furloughs back. The furloughs were put in place with the five and another five, but time off was given for that as well. So it's not just, you know, taking the furloughs and not getting nothing in return there. The other things that hit all cities, large, small, whatever it may be, is the increase of purse. And just within the last three or four months, we've been hit with increases three times that have not even been budgeted by the time we started negotiations. Healthcare costs are costs that are skyrocketing coming across. So these are issues that have always been here on the table from day number one, they're nothing new within the council. One of the things that we've said from day number one is, you know what, we want you guys to see those numbers. We want, we're going to be transparent. There's nothing hidden about this, as far as we want to do it. I don't know if any of you guys saw this or not, but the Chico City Council was written up by the grand jury for similar stuff, not being able to balance their budget in timely matter, trying to kick the can down the curbs. And so for us, you know, like I said, I truly, truly, we truly value all of you employees, but as a council, we're also got to make sure that we are able to balance these budgets because we represent the entire city of U of City as well. And we look forward to a continued and progress on the dialogues that continue on. So thank you guys very much for that. Next thing up, obviously, is appearance of interest to citizens. Members of the public may address the city council items of interest that are within the city's jurisdiction. Individuals addressing general comments are encouraged to limit their statements to three minutes. Anyone here in the public that wishes to comment on something that's not on the agenda? Can do so at this point in time. Okay, consent calendar. All matters listed in the consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time council votes on the motion unless members of the city council take a little break.
Look to approve. Want to approve that?
Got it.
Consent.
Okay, consent calendar. All matters listed in consent calendar are considered to be routine, can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the city council staff or public request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar at this point in time. Is there anyone from the public wish anything removed? If not, I believe we have to have number seven removed first because...
I don't think we do. I think we have the opportunity to vote on it with the caveat that since I live in one of the districts, I cannot vote on item number seven.
Right. Both of us, we need to abstain from item number seven.
Mr. Maron, you are correct. Councilmember Starkey is correct. You can approve it with the abstention of yourself and Councilman Starkey with regard to item seven.
Okay, perfect. Can I have a motion for the consent calendar?
Look to approve.
Second. Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye, with the abstention on number seven.
Yes, myself as well. Item number 11, mid managers' letter of understanding. Snadly.
All right, good evening, mayor and council members. Good to see you again. Tonight, I am presenting the mid managers' letter of understanding. I want to give you some background first, sorry, logistics. Briefly, the, just want to give, kind of put this in perspective for everyone who's here. The mid managers' LOU amendment expired June 13th, 2014. There have been, as we've been talking about this evening, there's been two furlough programs that have been in effect. The first furlough program began in 2009 and 2010, went for two years. Second furlough program, another 5%, has gone on for three years since fiscal year 2011 and 2012. So we've covered that. So it's been a 10% furlough program the last three years, and then before that, a previous two years of a 5% program. There's been no wage adjustments for employees since 2008. So we are going on our sixth year of no wage adjustments for employees. And there's been, and part of their agreement originally for their amendment was that there would be no employee reductions. So part of the agreement from the amendment that started in fiscal year 2011, 12, all the way back even, was no layoffs or employee reductions. So while we've talked about, and we all are aware, we read the papers, the state and local economy has improved. We can honor that, however, the city costs have continued to grow, which we've also talked about tonight. We have increased costs in workers' comp, healthcare, and also additional pension obligations. So that has really strapped the hands of the city, and these multiple financial hits have continued to put strain on the city. So that's what we're facing today. The mid managers are the first bargaining unit that have come to agreement with the city. Their terms are a two-year agreement that expires June 30th, 2016. It transitions out to 10% furlough program over the next two years while transitioning in employee contributions towards their CalPERS retirement benefits. It also provides two additional floating holidays. It continues the medical premium cost sharing, which is an 80/20 split of the total premium cost. And this contract terms, I also want to point out, also applies to the unrepresented confidential group. These contract terms wants restore service levels and also have the employees contribute towards the retirement. I want to touch upon the fiscal impact of this. The fiscal impact, the next increase for fiscal year 1415, which we're in now, we all know, is that requires a supplemental appropriation of $64,500, and then also results in $128,500 increase for fiscal year 1516. These also include both confidential and mid managers. The recommendation at this point is adopt a resolution approving a two-year letter of understanding with the mid manager group, approve a supplemental appropriation of $64,500 to the fiscal year 2014-15 adopted budget, and adopt a resolution approving the confidential group... No, they have been receiving merit increases if they're entitled to them. It's purely a COLA, or as some people call it, a CPI increase. So thank you for pointing that out.
Great. Okay, any other questions? Doc, can I get a motion?
I'd move the recommendation.
Okay, I've got a motion.
Second, Nat.
Got a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Natalie.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number 12, extension of the state water project water supply contract, agreement in principle with Department of Water Resources. Diana.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. In May, I brought to you an update on the state water project contract extension process and said that I would be bringing forward an agreement in principle to council in the near future for execution. So tonight, I'm bringing forward the agreement in principle for execution. So the four-step process for the contract extension, step one was to negotiate the terms of the contract extension. Step two was to develop the agreements in principle. And upcoming steps include the SEQA process, which DWR will be the lead agency, and then the contract amendment. And so we're looking at for the SEQA process, anticipating completion sometime in 2016, early 2017, with the contract amendment following thereafter. The benefits of a contract extension include that we obtain commitment for continued service beyond 2035. We have the ability to provide capital financing beyond 20 to 35. When I say we, it's DWR in conjunction with the state water contractors. It will ease financial compression and also allow for enhanced financial management. The proposed term of the contract extension is 50 years. And so DWR came up with a model, a cost model, and this is specifically related to Yuba City. The black line represents the contract, the cost, annual contract costs based upon the approval of the 50-year extension versus the blue dash line represents the contract expiration in 2035. So you can see initially, it results in a minimal increase, but overall, by 2035, it would be in excess of a million-dollar savings to the city. By 2050, it's approximately $800,000 to the city. By 2085, there'll be other projects in place, and they'll be discussing this before that point, so I'm not going to try to guess what it would be at that point in time.
Oh, come on.
It should be noted that there are a couple contractors that have, are not looking to approve the agreement in principle at this time, and that is basically related to the Bay Delta Conservation Plan, as that's an upcoming element that still needs to be negotiated. Signing this agreement in principle does not bind the city to anything related to the Bay Delta Conservation Plan. And so this strictly relates to the contract extension of 50 years and the terms related to that. So recommendation is to authorize the city manager to execute the agreement in principle.
Questions for Diana.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
Diana, you mentioned one of the steps in this process is the SEQA process.
Yes.
Who bears the cost of that? Is that the city or does DWR pay for the SEQA?
It comes out of all of our, it'll come out of the state water contract coffers.
Okay, so it's part of...
It's all of us that will pay for it. You know, the 29 contractors plus DWR.
All right.
Any other questions? Okay, can I get a motion for Diana?
Move to approve the item.
Okay, got a motion?
Second.
A second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Next up is item number 13, water rebate program, high-efficiency toilets, commercial spray nozzles, and smart irrigation timers.
You got me for the next two items. These next two items are very important as it relates to the city's water sources. Also, and may I brought before you an update on the city's conservation efforts. The city has, you know, the city's customers have done an excellent job of conservation over the last few months, especially compared to the statewide average of only 5%. And so to date, I think our average is approximately 15%. So great job on behalf of the Yuba City customers. The reason that this is so important is with the curtailments that we've received on our water contracts and the fact that we're using carryover water, a lot, the majority of our carryover water this year, if we do not have rain this next winter, 2015 is going to be a significant issue for Yuba City. So anything that we can do to encourage conservation and reduce the expectations and water habits of our customers is extremely important. Yeah, we're looking at potentially, if things don't change, we could be getting into 40% to 50% mandatory conservation measures next year. So this is extremely critical to the city at this point in time. So with that in mind, we've looked at programs to encourage water conservation, one of which is the water rebate program. And I just want to note that we've launched an Every Drop Counts campaign, and I want to give credit to our new Public Works Administrative Assistant, Sierra, who's here in the audience. She's been very instrumental in developing the materials for this campaign and the logo and the balloons, which are very popular at the summer stroll. So the Every Drop Counts campaign includes door hangers for irrigation issues. We're offering water audits through the water treatment plant, leak detection notification every month when we read meters. We get alarms for customers who have ongoing leaks, and the only reason, way that those alarms are triggered is if somebody has a continuous flow of water through their meter for a minimum of a 24-hour period, and then we get that alarm. So we're going to be sending out letters, we're working in conjunction with finance to send out letters to those customers to let them know that they potentially have a leak and what they should do in that situation. Don't necessarily go out and call a contractor. Call us and we can assist you with getting more information about your actual account. The next item on the agenda, the Water Smart Program, distribution of educational materials at the summer stroll and Yuba Center Fair, our new website, the Yuba City H2O, table tents for restaurants to encourage water upon request. We have conservation kits available at our water treatment plant, and then this rebate program. So the rebate program, we're looking at high-efficiency toilets up to $100, smart irrigation timers up to $75 or 50%, whichever is less, and pre-rin spray nozzles for commercial applications up to $50. The funding amount requested is $15,000. This is funds that we have as carryover in our water conservation account from this last fiscal year. So we requested finance to go ahead and carry it over into this fiscal year for us to utilize for this program. The application will be available on the city's website. By the way, the program will work, will receive an application, staff will verify the installation and cost, and then issue rebate. And then we're proposing that the eligibility period begin after council approval of the program, but if council wanted us to look at it retroactively to, you know, January 1st or something like that, we could do that as well. So staff recommendation is to approve a water rebate program funding in the amount of $15,000 to provide rebates for the installation of high-efficiency toilets, commercial spray nozzles, and smart irrigation timers.
Questions from the council.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
Diana, I thought you sure. Okay. One of the concerns I have for this item and the next item is that it sounds like the city's already doing a pretty good job of getting people to be thrifty with their water. Do we need to spend this additional money? Not that it's a lot of money or anything, but do we need to spend this additional money to make people more aware? Is 15% not good enough?
No.
Okay.
It's not. And I go back to my previous comments about the issues that not only we were facing this year in terms of, you know, the governor requested a 20% voluntary reduction, but if things don't drastically change, we're looking at likely conservation, mandatory conservation for 2015. And even if we have a really high volume in terms of rain events this winter, I don't anticipate that the, you know, state water contractor or other contracts are just going to turn around and say, okay, you can have 100% of your allocation. They're going to need the reservoirs to build up over a period of time. So I anticipate that we'll continue to have conservation requirements, but also it's just changing the mindset that water is a resource and it's something that needs to be...
Precious commodity.
It's a precious commodity. And when you combine that long-term with the city's contracts and our availability, ability to provide water, anything that we can serve overall saves us money in terms of treatment costs, conveyance costs, treatment at both the water treatment plant and the wastewater treatment plant, energy costs, you know, the less water we have to produce, we save on costs.
Sure. Now, and you said this money was a carryover from a prior year?
Last year, yes.
Okay, so it's not like new money we're trying to dig up or anything? Okay. Thank you. That was very informative. Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor.
I have a couple questions. This may be redundant, but what is the current savings that we've been able to accomplish since we announced this earlier this year?
Average is 15%.
15%. And we had asked, we tried to get 20%.
20, yes.
I think is what we're looking at doing. On the items that you have listed, the low-flow toilets, the sprinkler, smart sprinkler systems, and the spray nozzles, is there a list that's available for the public to know, or could we put that on our website so that they know what items qualify for this?
It'll be part of the application that they can download from the website. So we'll have, I know there was a, there was a concern about the high-efficiency toilets and that sometimes you have to flush them multiple times in order for them to clear. But we will have, you know, specifications in there in terms of the types of products that qualify for the rebate.
That was my question, because it's always been a concern of mine is that when, and maybe they've addressed this since they started the initial low-flow toilets, but when you had to flush them two or three times to clear the bowl, to me, that wasn't efficiency, that was just using more, more water. So and then if we are able to reduce those savings, we're on a, we have a flat base on our meters right now. And so if people are saving that money, it just mean, or they're saving the water usage, but they're still paying the same amount of money as they would have if they hadn't done that. I know that we're looking at a rate study, and I would like to look at something that is a tiered rate schedule so that we can incentivize people who do conserve water and those who don't, then they're the ones that are going to take the hit, so to speak. But right now, we're asking people to conserve, and they conserve, and they get no benefit from that. So it's, other than the fact that next year we may have water instead of not having water, but it is important that our rate structures reflect and reward people for conserving also.
So Mike Pelucci just issued the RFP, I believe, today, and that's one of the elements of the RFP for the rate study, is to evaluate that.
Any other questions? Diana, what about, obviously, we're giving or putting this up as a $15,000 grant, and you mentioned if we don't have any rainwater next year, Yuba City could be facing some drastic cutbacks from 40% to 50%. Have we looked around as far as people are wasting water or water's running over their lawns or...
Yes.
And what's the penalty that we're assessing them at this point in time?
So we're not currently assessing a penalty, and I'm glad you brought that up because starting next week through the end of July, we're going to be doing a very concentrated effort. We're going to, we're going to be sending out staff to, to find people that are irrigating during the day, the sprinklers, overspraying into the road or sidewalk, broken sprinklers, and they're going to be making direct contact with those customers to provide some education as to why that's, that's a problem. We're going to be keeping logs of the customers that are contacted, and at this point in time, we're not proposing to do penalties, but if we have ongoing issues with compliance, then we'll have to look at issuing penalties.
Jail time.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Through the mayor.
Yes.
After that wonderful explanation, and I appreciate that, I'd move the recommendation.
Okay, got a motion?
A second.
Second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item number 14, professional services agreement with Water Smart Software, Inc., for implementation of a water conservation program. You're up.
Again.
Again.
Terrell's bringing up the presentation. So the purpose of the proposal for the Water Smart Program is to implement a customer engagement tool, a water conservation program with the city's top 5,000 residential water users in terms of volume. The Water Smart Program primarily targets residential users. They're currently working on a module that would address commercial customers. So at this point, we're proposing to focus on residential customers. Program elements include a welcome letter, customer insight survey, bi-monthly water reports, in which they receive a water score, a customer portal web application, and utility dashboard web application. So the bi-monthly water report will include a water score. I love this because I love the little sad face for the water score on this example. Will provide water use in gallons per day, comparative consumption information based upon efficient neighborhoods, average neighbors, and then you. Rotating message modules, we can put different messages in each report, a personalized water-saving action plan, and then how to access the customer portal information. The customer portal allows you to compare your use for several months, also compared to all neighbors and efficient neighbors. It has recommended water-saving actions where it specifically says how much they could save on an annual basis if they were to implement those measures. And it also provides, you can look at how you're currently using water, so it would segment it into assumptions as to how much is being used on irrigation versus domestic. So it gives people a good idea of where are the areas that they could really focus on to conserve water. The other element is the utility dashboard, which would be for city staff, which would allow us to look at actually all of our residential water customers. So it's going to have all 11,000-plus account information in there so that we can look at trend information, how's water being used, that, so it'll be a good data source for The benefits of the program is that other utilities that have utilized this program have seen 5% water conservation on average. They've noticed that it increases customer satisfaction and engagement because it explains the water use, shows ways to save money on the bill, and provides tips to reduce water consumption. And the other key thing to this is that it allows the city to obtain email addresses for customers so that we can combine this with the new billing program and send bills electronically, which will then result in savings to the city in terms of postage. So this is an opportunity for us to collect that email information, to send documents electronically for an overall savings. So staff's recommendation is to award a professional services agreement to Water Smart Software of San Francisco. The staff report says Tiburon, but they corrected me there, San Francisco, for implementation of a water conservation program in the amount of $64,322, with the finding that is in the best interest of the city.
Questions for Diana.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
Diana, is this a one-time cost or is this an annual cost that we'll have to pay to use this software? How does that work?
It's an annual cost, and the way the contract is structured is that we're doing one year, it'd be a one-year agreement, and then prior to the expiration of the agreement, we would revisit this to see how it's working for Yuba City. And we could either extend the contract with, I believe it's a 3% increase, or we could choose not to extend the contract.
Sounds like a lot of money for our software, and especially that once it's developed, to keep charging that each year for that service, it seems to be a bit high to me.
Yeah, I think if we're using it strictly as a water conservation tool, it is high. If we're looking at it from the standpoint that it's a service that we're providing to the customer in terms of, so as a PG&E customer, we get those reports at home that show how we compare to other households. To me, you know, that's valuable information to have. It makes you think about how you're using your energy. And so with this program, it's that bi-monthly reminder to the customer that how they're using their water, the opportunities for them to save water. And, you know, in this time of drought where we all kind of need to change and shift how we think about water, this is a good program to do that. And so that's why when they talk about, they've seen a direct increase in customer engagement and willingness to participate in conservation programs as a direct result of the Water Smart Program.
So will we have things in place to be able to determine at the end of the year whether this has been a good value or not, or how would we do that?
Yeah, because we'll, we'll identify... And um, you know, in this time of drought where we all kind of need to change and shift how we think about water. This is a, a good program to do that. And so that's why, um, when they talk about. They've seen a direct increase in customer engagement and willingness to participate in conservation programs as a direct result. Of the Water Smart program.
So will we have things in place to be able to determine at the end of the, the year? Whether this has been a good value or not, or how would we?
Yeah, cause we'll, we'll identify the five thousand accounts at the very beginning. And we'll have their consumption, we already have the consumption information for the last three years for those accounts. And so at the end, towards the end of the program, we can then compare. The consumption information for those households compared to their previous three years to see if we've received, received any benefit from the program.
All right, thank you. Yes.
So Diana, we've gotten fifteen percent reduction with uh, very little effort. Uh, but this is gonna be five percent. Do I understand you right? Are they? Are they installing things on our meters or anything, or are they using our existing meters, our existing? Infrastructure and they're just taking that information and, and uh, using this program and uh, sending out a mailer basically or?
Right, so it's utilizing all of our existing equipment. We download, we read meters on the first of every month. We will download, load that information and send it to them. They will then glean the five thousand customers out of that. And then prepare these, these bi-monthly reports that will be mailed bi-monthly. And um, so they do all the work on that end.
And this comes out of the uh, water?
Water fund, yes.
Water fund. I could see this one time maybe, but uh, to continue every year, that, that's, that's a lot of money. Maybe our staff or somebody else can develop a program for cheaper.
Okay, any other questions? Writing some notes over there. Questions from this side of the panel, Dyes?
I believe we discussed everything and we got pretty well scored away over here.
Okay, then what's the pleasure?
Well, just, just to clarify what we were talking about, this is basically for those five thousand customers, about a dollar seven per month is what the, the cost is. Um, and then if we spread that across the full uh, customer base, it's considerably less than that, but I, I'm willing to. Take a look at it for a year to see how this works. Um, but it's gonna have to have some pretty good results. I mean, when you can, you can buy an app for ninety-nine cents uh, for your phone. Uh, for a company to sell this every year for sixty-four thousand dollars, it seems a bit steep to me, quite honestly, cause it's software. It's a lot of apps, I understand, so um, but I, I'm willing to give it a try. But I, I will be asking some tough questions come next year. And with that, I will make a motion to approve the, the item.
Okay, got a motion?
I'll second that.
Second, all in favor signify by saying aye. Thank you. Okay, item number fifteen, Domain Estates Phase Two Improvement Agreement, Subdivision Agreement and Final Map Approval. Mr. Moody.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Uh, the item before you is in regards to a twenty lot subdivision known as Domain Estates Phase Two. Um, some of you are familiar with uh, Domain Estates Phase One. Um, the original tentative map came to the planning commission in two thousand four. Phase one was um, began construction, um, was left unfinished. Interwest Homes recently purchased Phase One and is completing construction of Phase One, is interested in moving into Phase Two. In order to move forward with the Phase Two of the subdivision map, the city um. Requires that the developer entered into um, subdivision agreements and improvement agreements to. To require that those public utilities and improvements are constructed um, as part of the subdivision. So with item tonight, um, we're gonna ask that you approve the subdivision map, which is a twenty lot subdivision. And authorize the city to enter, to, enter into an agreement with the landowner and the sub divi- developer. To guarantee the improvements are constructed with the approval of that map. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Um, the developer is represented tonight here by um, Mr. Shawmanar with MHM. If you have any specific questions too.
Questions from council members? I bet I think this is probably a map that's coming for us. I mean, I can't remember the last time we had a subdivision map come before us. So it's nice to see at least there's some kind of development. It's nice to see that both the developer and the landowner are coming in agreement and, and footing the bill for putting some of those underground utilities in, so. Appreciate that.
I had a question. Ben, um, where does?
Tully Parkway?
Yeah. No, I know where it's at, but I, but while I know where it's gonna be. When and who is going to build that and how is this type of this subdivision or the next, uh, what's the connection there?
So Tully right now is planned to um, begin at Harder Parkway on the south. And move uh, pretty much along the middle of that west boundary line um, to the north. With this subdivision, um, they're only developing the um, crisscross pattern there. At this time, and so in order to compensate for Tully Road, they are giving s- the city fees. Um, that we've determined for uh, the cost to construct Tully Road. So the city will retain those until we share in the cost to construct Tully Road.
What was the, in the original approval of the subdivision, was there any condition? Either with Queen or Tully?
So Queens is to punch through to Tully and the Tully runs north to Pease Road. We get flipped to the next slide. This is on its side here. Uh, I did it. Yeah, it's not showing up. There you go. So it's on its side here, but Queens Avenue is gonna come, come here, Tully will run to the south. The south property owner here, Jason James, is going to dedicate, with this improvement agreement, is going to dedicate the south half of Queens Avenue. And the west side of Tully. Um, and we'll retain that i- in right away.
The laser.
There we go, we got a little light. Um, so this area right here is gonna be dedicated to the city. Through the map, so that will become city property. They're going to build a um, a wall, a block wall. Here, and then we're gonna collect fees for the um, construction of Tully Road in the future. So at this time, it's really developer-based, the, the first thing that will happen will be the development of. This Jan- extension of Janice Way, Kenneth Way and the development of these lots with the block wall. This piece down here to the south to Butte House will be um, a separate owner. And they'll come forward with a different map or plans when they decide to move forward with the development.
Okay, any other questions?
No, I'm glad to see it finally moving along. With that, I would uh, uh, move the recommendation.
Okay, got a motion?
A second.
And a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, item number sixteen is fiscal year two thousand fourteen fifteen, fire department purchasing through Ellen Curtis and Sons, chief.
Good evening, Mayor Gill, members of the council. Um, I brought my right-hand man with me tonight to help explain some of the more details. He's better at that than I am, but let me give you a quick overview. Um. Uba City Fire Department, uh, on June twenty-fourth, the city, uh, city's accounting manager brought a staff report to the city. Counsel, the annual reports all known purchases that will exceed fifty thousand dollars in the upcoming fiscal year. City council requested the fire department portion of the report to be removed and the fire department was requested to prepare a following staff report detailing. It's sole source purchasing through Ellen Curtis. As I said, I'll let Bill Fuller talk about that because he, he generates and handles most of our grants and most of our purchases. But um, just real quickly to kind of give you a quick summary. The reason we like to have Ellen Curtis on that list is in case we do make purchases over fifty thousand dollars. But it does not happen that often. It happens occasionally. And a best example I can give you. Is that over the last four years, uh, when we checked our panimation report, uh, last fiscal year, we spent twelve thousand dollars roughly with Ellen Curtis. The year before that, we spent forty-two thousand uh, roughly, and the year before that, two thousand eleven, we spent a little over thirty thousand. Uh, the, the last time we spent over fifty thousand with Ellen Curtis was in the year two thousand ten, we spent a hundred and one thousand dollars. I'm gonna assume that probably the majority of that was grant money. Um, and also I'm gonna make an assumption that it was probably large purchase items, because that's when we jump over that fifty thousand, when we spend. Money on things that are um, uh, that are, they're proprietary and the only Ellen Curtis can sell, uh, like turnouts and that type of thing. So with that, to kind of give you an idea of what we spent over the last four years, I'll turn it over to Bill now.
Mayor Gill and members of the council, uh, Councilman Buckland raised some questions at the last meeting and. Put together a little handout, I think you have it, uh, related to uh, the types of things that we currently are purchasing. I think there's some confusion or on my part, the staff report that the finance department talked about was. Citywide reoccurring purchases. I put all of our purchases that we go through. Anticipated purchases through Ellen Curtis as compared to sole source. Currently, we have three sole source agreements or justifications with Ellen Curtis. One is for uh, turnouts. The other one is for Hearst vehicle extrication equipment. The third one is Bullard thermal imaging cameras. If you go to those manufacturers' website and put in for a distributor in your area, it comes up Ellen Curtis. They actually are the exclusive distributor for Globe Turnouts, Hearst uh, extrication equipment. And the Bullard thermal imaging cameras for pretty much everything to the, to the Rocky Mountains West. Including Alaska and uh, and Hawaii. In the case of the turnouts, there are some regulations or standards that we work with, uh, National Fire. Protection Association, NFPA, has established a ten-year life for turnouts. So during that period of time, we work with them for uh, replacements and everything, because we've set a se- a set of specifications. Based on current spe- uh, safety, uh, specifications, materials and what have you. We've had the current globes for probably fifteen years, we've been working with them. Right now, in about year one, and probably completing the first. Year of a, an evaluation of current standards, rewriting our specifications for our turnouts and taking advantage of. Uh, some research and field tests that Cal- Cal Fire. LA City, LA County, Orange County, San Diego, uh, have completed within, in the case of turnouts. We've been doing some field tests, uh, wear tests of turnouts right now to come up with a conclusion of. Which set of turnouts are we gonna have for the next generation, next ten or fifteen years? Uh, you approved in this current bu- uh, current budget fifty-five thousand dollars to get us thirty-three sets of turnouts. They run about. Two thousand dollars each. Um, so we're hoping to come back within probably a month with a uh, recommendation who we would go with. There are only two uh, manufacturers. One is Globe, one is a company called Morning Pride. Each of those uh, uh. Turnout gear is handled by one company. Uh, in the case Ellen Curtis for Globe, the other one is called MS Fire. Um, the Hearst extrication equipment, our department just went through kind of an evaluation of are we at a point? To take a look at a different company. The evaluation was we would stay with Globe. We just recently purchased two sets of uh, extrication equipment for the new fire engines that will be coming, hopefully within the end of the summer. And thermal imaging cameras, we've been, we purchased those about ten years ago through grant money. And we're in the process of evaluating new ter- uh, thermal imaging cameras. That the whole uh, you know, upgrade of, of technology, there's some new features to them. Most of the fire guys say, give me a button that turns on and turns off and keep it simple, because. With gloves and everything else, it's pretty difficult to go uh, to work with those, but we're hoping then to make, potentially have a change here in the near future. We purchase a lot of stuff from Ellen Curtis. Um, we purchase um, turnouts, or excuse me, uh, wa- uh. Uniforms, boots and station boots, Shelby gloves, the structure fire gloves, Wildland gloves. We uh, handle or purchase things for the hazardous material team. But we purchased those on a competitive bid using the city's uh, purchasing policies and procedures. And as the chief said, the last four years, uh, we're, this past year, we were at a twelve thousand dollars. But what we've been doing is holding off our purchases of turnouts, which are gonna be expensive. Um, it's about fifty-five thousand for the, the thirty-three, will be coming back for the remainder. Uh, the NFPA has a standard in terms of. How you bring them into the system and how you have to end it at ten years, get them out of your system, get them, you know, have them gone. So we're having to get into this whole issue of how are we gonna finance those? But also how do we maintain them and how do we track those main- maintenance issues and keep a good record for any liability issues that come up? Um, I don't know if that answers the kinds of questions you had regarding that. I know the, the big issue with a lot of them is the exclusive dealerships and distributorships that are established. And it's kind of surprising when you look at the map for each of these manufacturers. Ellen Curtis has a place in Seattle, Los Angeles, Oakland. Uh, Salt Lake City and it just keeps going farther west, so that's kind of what happens with those. And questions from council members?
Yes, to the mayor. Um, and I appreciate the extensive um, uh, explanation that you've made about the purchases. Um, I did do a little bit of research, um, uh, since I asked that question about Ellen and. Uh, Curtis and Sons and found out that they have three locations in California. Um, talked to representatives from, uh, from Hearst. Um, and uh, and the exclusive, the exclusivity that they give to Ellen and Curtis and Sons. Um, is pretty much through the, the fire industry or the, the sales outlets. Or distributors uh, throughout the United States. Um, so it's, it came as no surprise that, that they've continued that very same model within California. My only concern was, um, you know, are we getting the best bang for our buck? Are we able to, to get competitive bids? And obviously, uh, on this, on especially Hearst equipment, uh, we can't get there. Uh, turnouts, that's a choice of, of, of fire service, of what turnouts they're gonna wear. Um, and, and whether or not you can get, you know, more competitive on that, but. I was just looking at some of the, of the larger purchases that are, that are being made, that's all. And I appreciate your explanation.
And, and actually, when we started looking even at uniforms, we tried to go out. Uh, at le- minimum of three, but we'd go out four or five vendors to try to get the best in. Even though Ellen Curtis is a major player and can bring the cost down. Uh, they have received a, a number of our bids, but we've been able to work with a lot of other companies. We go down to. A company in San Jose, a company in Rockland, and as well as uh, Ellen Curtis, to try to get the best price and extend what we have. Money-wise and through the fiscal year.
Through the mayor. Um, you mentioned uh, the Globe and I forget the name of the other was Morning.
Morning Pride.
Morning Pride. We're in the process of evaluating those, is that, so we're not going to be purchasing turnouts until we finish that evaluation, is that?
Exactly, and that's why our, this past year, our numbers were way down, twelve thousand. We, we've been looking at, Cal Fire did a major study. There's new materials that are out there. There's issues that they were looking at in terms of radiant heat and. Heat exhaustion and issues that they were having to look at, and there are a number of, of uh, fire departments, major departments. Uh, participated in that. And what, as it's been explained to us is, once somebody like Cal Fire makes that. Uh, comes to some decision as to what they're gonna do, it affects all the manufacturers. They're gonna adjust themselves. So there's some new materials that are in play, uh, the fabrics that they use, the liners that they use. And that will, what we're looking at now is setting our specifications to that. We've had a committee of the fire department, of firefighters, putting that together, looking at the features that we use currently. Uh, you know, from belt loops to different things, to make that a standard. And we've gotten, uh, we've received two prices where we've had two sets made. We paid for two sets, have given to the firemen and say, try them out. Wear, tear, find out what, what's gonna work. The knees we found aren't the best on some of them. But they're trying not just how it looks, but it's the wear, the moveability and everything else. That, based on price, we'll use that for part of our selection and we'll come back to you for that piece.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, can I get a motion for this? A motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye. I have motion carries, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item number seventeen is a business from city council, city council protocols, rules of conduct and decorum. Mr. Crater?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Excuse me, at your meeting. Earlier this year, goal-setting session of the city council, you asked staff to go back and revisit. Uh, the council policies and procedures related to uh, conduct and decorum. Um, to the credit of uh, Terrell Locke at the city manager's office, you have this document before you today. Essentially, it, it restates and captures, really summarizes. Uh, three documents that are referenced in the staff report that date back to nineteen ninety-one, brings them to current. Puts them together in three or four pages of information, adds um, information in addition to that. Um, and kind of as a reflection, you've got, to your credit, a, a very well-functioning city council. And it's looking at the fact that some things are done formally as established in these uh, these past policies, and then there are just some informal. Uh, processes of the council and what has been attempted to do is memorialize those in one place. So as your council changes over time, there's a standard that continues. Uh, that's what is captured here and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Great, any questions from Mr. Crater? Okay, Doc, can I get a recommendation?
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye. Wonderful, motion carries, thank you.
Wonderful, motion carries. Thank you. Item number 18 is city council reports from council members. First up is Councilmember Buckland.
I just want to take an opportunity to thank our, the managers here in Uba City for their efforts during negotiations and reaching contract agreements. Most of them have left the room and not seen it as they were here. I do want to recognize a couple of different things just before I move off into some of the things that I was involved in. You know, recognizing that our employees, there was a change in Hearst that happened. And so we have a, kind of a bi-level structure now with Hearst to get some savings. Our employees gave upwards of 18% in concessions in the past and we're well aware of that. And especially as a council member, I'm well aware of it. And having been an employee with this city and been on furloughs, understanding implications of those. And I do, I just want to thank the employees for the efforts that they're making as we move forward. It takes a lot of leadership to step out front and be the ones to say, we'll go first. And I applaud that manager's group for that. Attended the city employee awards. Were employees of 5, 10, 15, 20, 25, and I think we had a 35.
Well, there was one old guy, I think.
There he is.
Back there.
Really, really, he started with a, Bill served with the city when he was like four. And it's really kind of funny because I was, I had to reflect back. When I was sworn in as a police officer, Bill was there at the old city hall on Highway 20 that is now a private business and everything, but that's where that took place. And I just think, my goodness, the changes over time that you have seen here at the city. So thank you for your time. Also had a community meeting with members of the citizens that, I was with Mr. McIntyre over on Toyon and El Margarita. This was put together by Supervisor Jim Whitaker in response to some traffic issues. We're going to be working with that group, especially around the time that River Valley High School will be coming back into session and looking at what we can do to impact some of the very aggressive driving that is going on in that area and some of the safety issues to that neighborhood. So we'll continue to work with that. And I'll be working through, with the mayor in trying to come up with some of the solutions to that. Also attended the Children's Fourth of July Parade. Wow, who all was there? That was, what an amazing event. All these little kids lined up and the first ones in line were the Berry's. And they arrived there at 7 o'clock in the morning to be the first ones in line behind the mayor who sang and led a complete version of Happy Birthday to America in front of the entire crowd of I don't know how many hundred. But with that also, our chief was absent, but not really, because his hot dogs were there. And a staff was there serving those hot dogs. I don't know how many, 400 you guys, 600 hot dogs you guys went through. And I didn't eat any hot dogs, so, you know, that just tells you that there were a lot of people at that event. But I appreciate everything you did in the department and the city to be able to put that event together. And that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Ramon.
Some of the same events, the employee recognition, it was a great event to recognize the great employees we have and how long they've been with us. It's the employees that make the city great, so I also enjoy going to that event along with my fellow councilmen and recognize and appreciate, show appreciation of our employees for their service. Went to the highway ribbon cutting. We attended a couple of them in the last few weeks. And I want to publicly thank the past city council members and past board supervisors and thank them for their effort that we now pretty much have a four-lane highway to Sacramento. Once they get rid of the Rio lights, it'll pretty much be non-stop from Uba City to Sacramento. That's a huge accomplishment for those people that have been around for a while. It just seems to take forever and anybody, there's a lot of hard work and lot, and effort by a lot of previous elected people in our positions and at the supervisor level. Attended Housing Authority meeting, routine Housing Authority stuff going on. We're looking at, our Housing Authority has become a regional housing authority. Used to be Sutter County Housing Authority, then it became Sutter Nevada Housing Authority, Sutter Nevada Cloosa Housing Authority, and I think it's gonna soon be Sutter Nevada Cloosa Uba Housing Authority. We're in negotiation with Uba County to make them part of this Housing Authority. So one does doing a great job running that agency. Attended the Uba Sutter Transit Authority meeting. We're working on negotiating a contract with the agency that wants, even though it's a local agency and the board makes up of the local council and the board of supervisors from the local jurisdictions. But the company that runs it and takes care of the almost 60 employees is a national agency, Viola. And the term was up, so we had three different international companies bidding for it. And that's something we'll be discussing at our next, this Thursday, to see who we're awarding that contract to. I'll leave it at that.
Okay, Councilmember Mr. Turkey.
I also had the opportunity to go to the recognition ceremony for the longevity, the Harvest Room. And I gotta tell you that the staff did a wonderful job decorating the room and making it a very special event to recognize those people. I went to the installation of officers and directors for the downtown business association. They've got a group of vibrant, excited people to help Pluma Street even get better than it is now. Went to the fire department badge pinning ceremony, which was pretty exciting. We got three newly appointed fire captains and a newly appointed battalion chief. We're pretty darn fortunate to have such a well-trained, competent, and caring group of people as firefighters in our community, and I think we're very, very lucky. And also, finally, congratulations to Councilman and former mayor John Buckland for the addition to his family. And also for the birthday camping trip he took his wife on. They got, they found out there was a railroad track right about 25 feet from where the campsite was. So that made it a pleasant evening. And that's about all I've got. Thank you.
Okay, Vice Mayor Dukes.
Well, I'll run through things quickly because a lot of these were mentioned by other council members. The annual awards, recognition dinner, that's very good. The Fourth of July Parade, the ribbon cutting at Highway 99 and 113 interchange, the fire badge pinning ceremony, the DBA meeting downtown. And then also participated with the mayor at the swearing-in of new citizens at Veterans Hall just before the Fourth of July. And that's always a great event to welcome new citizens to our community that have gone through all of the proper steps to be here legally and applaud what they do. And then over the past couple of weeks, have attended three different change of commands out at Beal Air Force Base, and I think we've got one left this week. And I think that's getting, winding down of the change of command out at the base. But it's always, it's double-edged because you say goodbye to people that you've gotten to know over the past few years and then welcome new leadership to our community. So it's always a special time. Also attended the Sutter Buttes Flood Control Meeting, Mosquito Vector Meeting. And I think that pretty much has taken up most of my time over the past couple of weeks, so.
Great, thank you very much. I'm not gonna bore you guys, been attending a lot of the same meetings. Sometimes we feel like that's all we spend all day long, is from one meeting to the next, to the next, to the next. And I think my wife said, don't you really work? So, you know, you try to juggle your time from one job to the other, but, you know, this is a job, full-time job as well that we take on, but we do enjoy it. Obviously, we did have a Sutter Buttes Flood Agency meeting and they are continuing to work on the levies in four different directions with the levy. And they're trying to work with the Indian groups for various reasons within that levy district because we were known with the Mide Indians coming across with that area. And one of the things that we did was we wrote letters to Senator Feinstein and Senator Boxer's office because they played an instrumental role in helping move this levy funding along in the fast track. And so I believe tomorrow, members of Senator Boxer's office will be here tomorrow touring the levy. So which is kind of nice because when you go back to Washington DC, you talk about the Sutter Buttes Flood Agency, and they all know exactly where it's at because they've all worked together on this particular levy, so that's gonna be kind of nice. Again, I do want to reiterate to all of our employees that, again, they are the backbone of the city of Uba City. And like I reiterated earlier, is the city had faced uncharted territory in years to come. And we're still lagging behind within revenues and we're always a year, two years behind. And with the unbudgeted expenses with Hearst and with healthcare costs coming up, it's always difficult. You're always trying to balance the budget. And like I'd mentioned earlier, too, this is one of the things that we've got to take a look at is have a plan of how do we balance this budget without kicking the can down the curb. And that's something that we're all wrestling with every single day. And we continue to have open negotiations and hopefully resolve this issue sooner than later. And then that's, you know, like I've always said, is we're always gonna be, always have been transparent to anybody who wishes to come in, see our numbers, where we are, what we can do differently. That's one thing that we're always here and we're always open for that. So I do want to thank all of our employees. Like you mentioned, John, is that the Children's Day, Fourth of July Parade, dynamite, awesome. If you haven't been there, it's kind of nice to see because this is really the children's parade put on by the firefighters and the police officers. And chief, thank you to your entire troops for cooking hot dogs. And the nice thing about it is it's every single one of these kids come in, they line up. You should see them, how they decorate their bicycles, their wagons, and they're out there earlier. They decorate themselves in the red, white, and blue. The nice thing is we had our, I believe it's a Uba Sutter Orchestra that was there as well, playing. And so if you wanted to just sit in the shade and listen to the orchestra for a while, so that's kind of nice. If you've never been there, I definitely encourage each and every one of you, just come and attend it for one year. And I guarantee you'll be hooked on it, where you'll be coming back over and over again. So with that, tonight, I'd like to close this meeting in the memory of Mark Martin, who passed away and he's a business owner on Pluma Street, had the Uba Sutter Brewery there on Center Street. So I'm gonna go ahead and close this meeting tonight in his memory. So with that, the meeting is adjourned.